Call.
I'm so sweet.
We will go ahead and call the order that Wednesday, June fourth, the dissonance regular council meeting. That will start the pledge.
But the leaders, if you have my opinion, of the United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberation of us to the throne.
Roll call. Duncan here, part winner is absent tonight. Gabriel, Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Quiethead.
Here.
Takes us to our civility pledge. Uh, we pledged to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community. Looking to perfect and approve the agenda. Can be any known changes to?
Remote changes.
Well, I'm going to perfect and approve the agenda now, second. Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quiethead?
Yes.
Next is citizen speak. This is time for anybody uh in the audience that would like to speak on non and in items. Uh, we'd have Cassie on the list of Cassie.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Ropols. I'm one of the founding members of Jordan Creek Church. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I want to take a moment to talk about the future of Jordan Creek Church and the importance of ensuring that we continue to serve this community after twenty twenty seven. When the building that we currently rent from the city will be torn down. A twenty twenty two economic study in North Carolina examined eighty seven rural churches and found on average. Each generated more than seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollars of annual economic value. This came through a combination of direct spending, volunteer hours, educational childhood services, one-on-one support and community enrichment. These are the kinds of services that Jordan Creek Church is already providing in Solon today. We are touching lives. We're impacting the well-being of residents and surrounding township. Our presence builds community bonds, supports mental health, encourages volunteerism, strengthens families. In fact, a national survey found that seventy-five percent of adults believe that churches improve community cohesion. A key factor in keeping families rooted and invested in their cities. Solon has been my home for twenty-five years. I got married here. I raised my children here. And as they return as adults, they stay connected to their church family, their natures, their friends, and those who deeply supported their well-being. I share all of this because Jordan Creek Church is not just a project. It is an opportunity to do something truly great for our city. Something that aligns to the best of who we are and what Solon is to come. Supporting our permit, removing unnecessary roadblocks, isn't just a kind gesture. It is strategic investment in the city's future. I ask that you consider this church building project as a critical component to your economic growth plan. A project that brings tangible, far-reaching benefits to the community likely greater than any other growth project to date. It is your opportunity as elected community officials to embrace the plan that does more than just checkboxes. It builds people, community, and it builds long-term economic strength. We're not asking for handouts. We're asking for a partnership. We ask that you quickly respond to our requests, evaluate what exceptions or adjustments may be reasonable. And work with us to build something that uplifts the people of Solon for generations to come. Thank you for your time, your leadership, and your vision for a strong Solon.
Thank you, Kathy.
So anybody else this evening that would speak on non agenda items? All right, uh, that takes us down to the consent agenda. So approval of the minutes from the May twenty first, uh, twenty twenty five regular meeting. For all the listed bills, treasures, reports, and transfers, building permits, we have a few.
Chosen here inside.
Uh, beer and liquor license, there are five of them on there. Uh, cigarette permits, there are four of them on there as well as the Big Grove. Uh, event and the beef days lease. So before we get through all that, no, Katie's here, I'll talk through the Big Grove uh event. I'll turn it over to you.
Um, so we're just basically uh hoping that we can ho- host another fun event for the entire community. Um, we like to. Those on the street, we bring in bikers. They start at Big Grove Iowa City, Big Grove Cedar Rapids. They all join here. It will be from ten thirty AM until, or I'm sorry, ten AM to one thirty PM. Um, the bikers will be here, then they will turn around and ride back to the location they started at. We're just asking if we can shut down the street from the corner of Big Grove here on um Main Street and Iowa to just the alleyway like we have in the past. We would like to extend it out to include the two parking spaces instead of just the one parking space this year. Um, because we're expecting to have more riders, but that's uh basically what we're asking to do.
And I'll just add that this is one of those unique situations where Big Grove is hosting the event here in town. And then there's a second application for the actual ride um for the bike, that the bike coalition. So there's two applications, but it's for the same event. And that's how we've approached those events when there's um been kind of a landing point here in Solon. Um, the, the original route that was presented um did not follow the bike path, so they have some resubmitted. Um, a new route that follows the bike path. So I think all, all is good. And what you'll see on the agenda later is that um, that road closing that Katie talked about.
I'm not from the consent the agenda. I'll thank them.
Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quiethead?
Yes.
Takes the fire department report. Uh, we had met last month and set the budget for uh next fiscal year. Uh, that everything went pretty smooth for the budget process. Uh, they did have the pancake breakfast. Oprah Memorial Day weekend. Sue, somebody will put you on the spot. You know, the final count that came.
Five nineteen.
Five twenty.
Dang.
Uh, so there's definitely a crowd and I was around two thousand when I, I walked through there. So uh, awesome to see the community support. Uh, for the fire department. But again, I just appreciation for everything the fire department does, uh, keep us safe. Sheriff's office report. What do you think, Gabriel? Hi, everything is awesome. How's work strategy part camp?
Yeah, a few highlights. Uh, first, I wanted to acknowledge Chris Richardson in neat spec for spending some extra time. Uh, getting the veteran banners up by Memorial Day weekend. Um, I think that was uh, uh, going above and beyond. They knew they had some, having some material issues on Friday and they weren't going to get it done and they made sure they got all the, the banners up. So special thank you. Um. The, that's just the kind of thing that really makes a big difference in a small town and we appreciate them for um, you know, making sure that happened. Um, also, uh, hosted a pretty large event, uh, Girls on the Run. And this, uh, this past weekend, two weekends ago, actually. Went well. Um, just thanks to Public Works for all their work that has to happen after these large events. Um, because, you know, keeping our town and our community, our parks looking great, there's really a source of delight for all of us. Um. Had um, uh, Dave Richards has been working with um Viking and Neptune. As you recall, at budget season. Council approved the new um, the meter reading system that's going to allow us to read the meters from the water tower. So Dave has been spearheading that project. We're in, still in um gathering information. Um, the materials have arrived, but the installation process is kind of where we're at. Um, kind of navigating how that's going to look. Um, goal is sometime this summer to get that done. Um. Chris has also been handling some um fuel pump issues. So our apologies to uh the fire department and the school. As we are working on getting those fixed, um, we have a shared ju- uh fuel uh station. And it's a great collaboration between the school and the city and the fire department. However, just some getting on working, get that, the pump issue fixed here. Hopefully sooner than later. And um. Also, um. Um, early morning street sweeping is going to happen. So if you live on Main Street, it might be a little noisy about five thirty tomorrow morning. But needs, needs it and looking forward to getting the streets cleaned. Anything I missed? I know a lot's happening pretty fast. Um, I just tried to get the highlights, Chris and Dave.
No.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, we can't wire report this.
Yes, it is summer reading program time. Um, and he'll thank once again sponsor our T-shirts. So I hope to see all of you in one of these T-shirts by next city council meeting. You can do that by reading a book and turning in a slip. Or you can attend programs and do activities at the library, get secret code. Once you have four, that also gets you a slip. Your first slip gets you your T-shirt and a small prize and a chance to win the amazing grand prizes that have been selected. The theme this year is level up at your library. So lots of fun plays on that in terms of games and different activities. Um, we've just been thrilled with the turnout already. We had over two hundred and fifty at our kickoff party on Friday. And we've been busy nonstop since we opened the door on Monday morning. So love to see that, love to see that love of reading and learning. Each year, the foundation from the library gives two scholarships to seniors. And every year, they talk about how much the summer reading program meant to them, how much the library means to them. So that sort of energizes us too, as we get ready to go into the very busy season. Um, knowing what an impact that makes long-term on our amazing community and our youth as they grew up through the different ages. So. And um, first program that you can attend as an adult is a murder mystery, four thirty on Saturday at the library. It does need registration, but we're happy to help you with that. So far, only six people have signed up. So I think there's still another twelve spots. So um, definitely something to consider after you've done your garage sailing and take a little nap. Then you can come and work together and we all try to figure out who done it.
Thanks, Liz. Next, city attorney report. Kate?
Yeah, a couple things. Um, first, the wastewater treatment plant, alternative analysis, uh, will be reported to the council. We're going to have a meeting with the public. That'll be June nineteenth at seven PM on Zoom. And then we're going to follow that on the twenty-eighth at nine AM City Hall with uh open session for public to ask questions. That'll be uh stuff that we can incorporate into the facility plan. If there are any points that are brought up from that, or if people just have questions, we'll, we'll step through the history of it, give more details so that we can try to uh make sure everybody's informed on that. And then Australia Road Lane Project, June ninth, the contractor from the, the end of the network, and that is from Will Drive Windflower Lane. They'll close that off at Will Drive. So there'll also be an access off Highway Lane. And then there's also a small housing development on the north side that will be impacted, but they have two accesses as well. So we're planning to have a meeting with contractors shortly, but that's the general scope. They plan to be done with that project by the end of June. Unless when they're pulling out that pavement, they were in dispor soils, that might take a little bit longer to get uh addressed, but that'll be a plan for that project.
Excellent.
Dave, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
When, so everybody's reading the article about the survey, the water survey, can we expect any comments from you on? How that impacts Solon or what it means? Because it's very complicated.
Yeah, maybe that would be something we put on the agenda as a discussion item, if that's appropriate, Kami, and then I can do a little bit of a report. Um, as far as the discussions we've had with the uh hydrologist that did the report.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
So city attorney, Kevin?
And nobody wants to hear anything from me.
All right, that takes down the old business. So item fourteen, uh, ordinance four ninety-one, the water rate ordinance is the third and final reading. Any changes from the second three?
No changes.
All right, I will make a report for ninety-one. What's up then? Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quiethead?
Yes.
Takes us to ordinance number four ninety-two, the sewer rate ordinance. This is also a third and final reading. Any changes from the second three?
Would approve ordinance four ninety-two.
Second. Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quiethead?
Yes.
Takes us down to new business, item sixteen, Johnson County elected officials presentation. Hand it over to.
Hello, hello, I'm the Johnson County Treasurer, Scott and Lisa, and I've been here several times. Uh, last time I was here, different mayor, so it's nice to see the mayor. Um, four months ago, us elected officials got the, like, well, how can we give out to community and give back? We don't always go back out and see what they want. So we set this, we call it the city tour twenty twenty-five. Uh, we're gonna hit every city in uh Johnson County and see what they'd like to hear from us or how often they'd like us to come visit. So it's kind of a survey tour, pretty back to us, but at the same time, you get a little update what we're going on. And I have exciting news for me. Um, just today, if you are with tax and tags, a new feature is on that payment site. So before you pay your property tax, yeah, I'm the property tax guy. I know, I pay it too. I pay it too. Um, but about, I've been a deputy in that office for twelve years, but very first day. Exactly. I was pushing for a way to pay online, uh, which would be kind of an ACH to take out of your account for every member to pay every time. You no longer have to remember. Starting today, today's the first day you go into the customer account on our tax and tags. When you make your September payments, set up your March payment, it'll come out, ease up the amount. Uh, once you have a customer account, you put all your parcels in there, so many farmers in the room, you put all your parcels in there and track them. You can divide it between your relatives, how much each pays. And so there's a lot of functionality in that. Um, and we said we keep it short. So on that high note, as far as I can let you go, uh. Brand new thing, I have taxi tags, so figure uh advantage of it. I hope you have a great rest of the meeting. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
Hi, I'm Julie Persons. I'm the county auditor. A lot of you know me as the department that runs elections. This year is the city of school elections. We will be running for November three for county council this year. Um, but a lot of people don't realize that real estate also falls under my department. So with Scott's office, um, and the assessor's office, we deal with a lot of the real estate things. Um, my deputy Tara works very closely with all the cities to do uh city evaluations, deal with your tip things, things like that. So. Uh, we are a lot more than elections. Um, people really don't see us a lot until. They want to split a property if they own a farm and they decide that would make a great neighborhood. Uh, and they need to parcel things out, then they come through us and through the assessors, you work together. Otherwise, we're dealing with a lot of other people. So we are always here to help you. Um, so if you have elections questions, you already know to come to us, any real estate things.
Hi, I'm Rachel Zimmerman Smith. I'm the Johnson County Attorney. I'm the attorney for the tax guy and. All of these guys, uh, my office represents on my work with Kevin, um, for probably two decades. Sorry to.
Yeah.
The age of. Age of Kevin. I'm actually, uh, grew up in Solon. I went to Lakeview until I was in fourth grade. Uh, we lived out on rural route two, which Sheriff Uncle tells me is now a street name. Um, and so Solon has a special place in my heart. Um, my office, uh, most people think of it just as being the chief prosecutor for the county. Uh, and we do that certainly. Last year, uh, my office prosecuted approximately five thousand cases from various law enforcement agencies. Uh, thirty-five hundred indictable cases and uh served just over a thousand victims of violent crime. Um, so. Uh, we are very busy on the criminal, in the criminal division, uh, working on that, making sure we hold offender, offenders accountable and give victims a voice. Uh, the other thing my office does is we represent all of the other departments in the county, elected officials. Uh, we're like a, a big law firm and have seventeen attorneys, including myself, ten criminal attorneys, four civil attorneys, and two attorneys that work. Uh, strictly in the juvenile division. So that's uh delinquencies and then um cases that involve the Department of Human Services. So we're a really busy office. I know you all are busy. Thank you to the council and all of you for um, for being here um and doing this job. I know it's not always easy. Um, and I appreciate it. And if there's anything um that I can do or my office can do or answer questions, please don't hesitate to, to get in touch. Um, you know where to find me. Thank you.
Hey, guys. We've met. Those who have, don't know me, I'm Brad Conkle. I'm the Johnson County Sheriff. Um, but like most of you know, I cut my teeth on elected office in one of these chairs. Um, served on the council for six years. So I'm always, um, it's always like coming home for me, especially in this room, um, in, in a lot of ways. And I was. Uh, actually part of the council who landed in here all those years ago. Um, I don't have much to pass on, just a couple of things from the sheriff's office on the. On the hiring front, we're actually full staffed on the deputy side of the house. Um, we've got a couple, like three open detention officer positions in our jail, but beyond that, um. We're in a really good place right now. We've got a couple people who I think are still waiting or going to go through FTO program on patrol. Um. But beyond that, we're, we're in a good place staffing and budget-wise. Um, the jail, of course, continues to make the news as it should. I hope everybody's still paying attention to that. Um, I'm curious, how many of you got a survey in the mail here recently about the jail? Um, so. We've been working on this uh with the, in, in the county for the last couple of years about starting down the road of having to replace the, the sheriff's office and the jail. Um, you know, we had a bond referendum about twelve, thirteen years ago that failed, but the, you know, the problems in the jail haven't ever really stopped. Um, the big things that have changed, we've implemented the incredible amount of diversion programs and the building is still overcrowded and deteriorating. Um, this year, we're going to spend three and a half million dollars just to kind of keep it, literally keep it together. Um, all the while, we're looking at putting the jail on, on a bond referendum next fall, so in the fall of twenty-six. But in the meantime, what we uh, we need to do is kind of gauge what's the public's understanding of the issue? And where are the gaps we need to fill in the information? So that's the purpose of the survey that we see. Um, we're working with the. It's the Center for Social Science and Innovation. They get that right?
Yeah.
Um, University of Iowa, they're kind of leading the charge on actually doing a, a scientific survey, if you will. So. Uh, the CSSI selected, I think it's four thousand random um addresses across the county. So it's a very. Fair and, and random sampling of, of the county, um, and the questions or everything. Some basic demographics, but really what we need to find out. What's the average person's understanding of the status of the building, of what the sheriff's office and the jail do? Um, and also see if the public has an understanding of the other kind of potential thing we're looking at. Um. Is we did a space study about a year and a half ago that identified the space that we need for a new facility, which is a hundred and forty bed jail, as well as a new sheriff's office building. But then also, uh, the city of Iowa City is in the same boat with the police department. And so we're also taking our study, combining it with a space study the city is doing. And looking at, is there an opportunity to co- cohabitate in the same structure? And present that as an option to the voters next year as well. Um, so we, we're kind of, those two tracks are slowly starting to, to converge. Um, and hopefully by the end of the summer, we have a better idea of what an actual facility could conceptually look like, what the size would be, and then what that cost would be to the voters. Um, so for those of you who haven't surveyed, please fill it out, send it back in. Um, I think they expect ten percent is about their average return. I'm really hoping. Uh, this, this, it's a lot more response from the public. Um, this issue comes up every single place I go. Whether I walk into Hy-Vee to buy lunch or, um, I've literally been asked about it on a shuttle bus in Siesta Key, Florida. So, um, which tells me this is very important to everybody across the county, and it should be, because it's not just the. You know, we serve everybody in the county in one way, shape, or form. So everybody's opinion matters, whether you live here or in Tiffin or in Corville or anywhere in between. Um, so please, yeah, fill it out. Um, if you, if you haven't found it, hopefully it still may still come to you, but I'm guessing whoever has it should have had it in their mailbox by now. Um, and then lastly, as you, I think she left, um, the Big Grove event's a perfect example of, um, one of the priorities. We were, we're stepping up this year at the sheriff's office, our traffic enforcement. I just sent something out to patrol yesterday. Um, you know, traffic deaths are climbing. Uh, the ATV law did not help. You know, that's made the news recently too, how that's kind of a whole other class of fatalities involving traffic is with UTVs. Um, but overall, um, we, we're going to start stepping up and doing our part to making sure the roads are, are safe. I mean, we, we work hard. But it's a priority because you should expect to be safe on your roads. And that not only means on Highway One, but that also means. Stop sign enforcement everywhere in between. Um, these are the things that we usually get the most complaints from all of our contract towns are usually traffic, parking, and animals. Um, so we'll be stepping up some of our traffic enforcement across the summer. One of the effects, I think, that some of your development has had, especially three, two, is now that it's slow most of the way out of town, which I'm very glad to see. It also means we're seeing more traffic kind of divert up to one forty. Um, and so we've had some discussions with the county recently about how to improve the safety of those intersections. Especially Ely Road one forty, if there's a lot of crashes.
Yeah.
Um, so we finally, the board's getting on board, putting in some rumble strips at the one forty of the Ely Road location. Because most of our crashes there are people running the stop sign when they're westbound. Um, Highway one on one forty is a little different because we've got to work with the DOT and. Hey, she didn't know, that's not always easy. Uh, but at least that's kind of the low hanging fruit solution we're looking at. Um, so. Anyway, a- as you know, I'm easy to get ahold of. Um, if anything, you can, I mean, I'm in town enough, you can also fly and get on anytime or read something, any question, feel free to get ahold of them. Thanks for what you do. Thanks for letting us be a part of your life.
Rex, just one question out of curiosity, maybe it's premature uh to ask, but if you're spending three and a half million to maintain the jail as it is, what would a? A bond payment or a payment look like at the new, with the new.
Payment. Um, when we did our, the space study we did last year. Uh, again, identified a hundred and forty bed jail facility plus everything else we need as the sheriff's office. And keep in mind, we have a hundred and seven employees. Um, would be about a hundred and one thousand square foot building. And the estimated cost at that time was around seventy-nine to eighty million dollars for a bond referendum. Um, the money we're spending this year. Is again, is literally keep the building together. One of the, the main reason this has kind of come up last couple of years is we have some pretty serious structural deficiencies. Um, you know, the building's coming apart before our eyes. So we're doing an entire envelope project, removing the whole roof. And then the roof project also means all of the HVAC needs to be replaced too. Um, it is no matter what we have to spend the money, whether we are there another five years or, you know, if, if. For some reason, we, we don't wind up passing referendum, we still got to call it home. Um, but the, the, the missing piece, and at some point, what needs to happen is the supervisors in the city of Iowa City need to come together and. And make a decision, make a commitment to what, what one wants to do, what they want to do, or they want to do it together. Um, you know, they have a good plan before them. Um, again, it's important to everybody. What I'm waiting on now is a commitment um from all of them.
In this. Okay. Thanks, guys. We very rarely get all of you in the same row, in the same.
Yeah.
Do you like quick pictures on there? Follow them back.
Yeah. Sean, Andrew, you're elected. You have to. Sorry.
Squeeze back.
I'll stand in front of the court. I know, my pain. More problem. Hey. Piling deadline. Can you do some? Okay. Do it now. Twenty-five, no, you can't turn it in. Okay, that's what I wanted, honey. Awesome. There you go. Thanks, Susan. Okay, I can do that. Thank you. All right. Get back.
All right, that takes us to item seventeen, resolution twenty-five twenty-six, a few mile fringe area additional use permit from Meyer Farms, Jordan Creek Church. Now, here, Kevin?
Oh, yes. I'll get started. Um, basically, the resolution before you is essentially the same resolution as the last meeting. Couple minor revisions. Um, we had confirmed after the meeting that the property has changed hands. It's no longer owned by Meyer Farms. It's now owned by Jordan Creek Incorporated. And so our request to the county was to void this application and. Um, request that Jordan Creek submit a new application. I'd enclosed um the comments that we received back from uh Planning Director, uh Josh Bussard. And uh included that in your packet. Basically, uh Josh has taken the position that at Jordan Creek, plus they would. Continue the application with a note that the ownership has changed. Um, so that's been reflected in the resolution. Also. Um, in addition, um, there's a new attachment, attachment E, and that's a municipal improvement agreement that has been drafted by. Um, Kevin Olson, and that um outlines uh the typical. Uh, the typical improvements that we would ask of a developer um who has not annexed. Um, this, uh, I'll let Kevin explain that in just a second. Um, I just wanted to highlight that. I'd also has have talked to Josh since the last meeting, and um he had shared that he had met. Uh, he had explained the timeline and the council's option to ask for an extension or move forward with the um. The scheduled June fifteenth, sixteenth deadline. Um, after visiting with uh Mayor O'Neal, um. The direction was to stay the course, have the resolution on this agenda, and I shared that with Josh. And he said that um there was a meeting with uh supervisor Sullivan. And supervisor chair John Green and himself in his office, and that generated a letter that I've shared with you that I was copying on that went to Jordan Creek. Representatives. Um, the Board of Adjustment meeting is set, always set for the third meeting of the month. So therefore, um, it's anticipated that the conditional use permit will go um to the July sixteenth meeting. I don't have a time on that yet. Um, so two things um that Josh was able to clarify. One is if. The council would um take no action on the conditional use permit after sixty days. It would be assumed that the council had no issue and it would go forward. Um, basically with understanding that of of approved. Um. If there, if there's opposition to the um application. Um, by resolution, then that would require a super majority of the Board of Adjustment by the member board. Um, I'd ask for clarification on what the the uh Josh's department plans to. Um, require of the project from a county perspective, and he shared that he based. That him, he and his department will base that on what kind of feedback um is received from the Solon City Council. So I just wanted to share those updates that have happened in the last two weeks. Want to talk about that agreement?
You've seen these type of agreements before. This is the same, almost the same improvement that we used with the Dylan's Farrow, Mr. Hayman's property on. Uh, Highway One and and the Horse Farm, Oak Meadows, I think it was called. Uh, uh, so basically what this agreement says is that. They will not, we, there's no requirement that they hook up city water or city sewer at the time to develop. There's uh. Uh, the road that everybody's talking about, we want to have it reserved for the location. We don't, there does not have to be built at this time. Uh, basically, so basically, if and whenever they get annexed into the city, the city council may order that improvements. Uh, they may have to hook up to the sewer water eventually, and they may have to uh. Uh, do that road at the at some point, depending on what's going on. The council doesn't have to do it. It's the council's decision at the time. We can't bind the council. It gets annexed five, ten years from now. So at this point, uh, the agreement basically says that. Uh, if it ever gets annexed, that the city council has the option to order the construction, order the city uh water and sewer to be connected to. And the city water and city sewer, at this time, the sewer, they do not have to hook up the city sewer or city water. Uh, they could uh have the road uh done, and there would be a sidewalk eventually in front of that property on three eighty-two. It's obviously not gonna make them put in the sidewalk, because nowhere. So, but that, all these things uh will only happen if it at the time that. This property's annexed. So uh, this is the same, pretty much the same agreement that those other uh. We've used in the past for within the two mile uh fringer agreement radius, so. So we would ask that the county goes ahead and approves the uh, one of the conditions we're asking is that the county uh. Approves that condition use permit, that the disagreement would be signed as part of that deal, get recorded with the uh, with the developers.
Questions? Oh, it's on anything. No, we talked through in great detail last meeting, so. Any new, I know we had quite a crowd last meeting, any new questions or comments outside of the discussion that we had at the last meeting? With that, on, do we have any action or motion for resolution twenty-five twenty-six? I'll manage to agree resolution twenty-five twenty-six. Second. Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item eighteen, resolution twenty-five twenty-seven, fringe area agreement amendment.
This is just, uh, uh, we had, we had talked the, um, this was brought up just from the way this uh, uh. Uh, this process had gone with with the Fringe Air Agreement. Uh, so what what I've done here is. Uh, the Fringe Air Agreement said that a subdivision was uh splitting a parcel into two or more lots for building development. The argument we had with the county and was that this is what has happened here is actually what the what the subdivision, they they did not agree. So basically what I've done is. I've uh added some more definitions to the subdivision part of that agreement that basically says. Kind of the same thing, if you take a parcel and you split it up via plat, uh, like a subdivision plat, a plat of survey or. A uh, others plat, that that still is a subdivision cell. Um, so that was one of the things. The other thing was. We had a category called other applications. There was it that was attached here that if it was in the one mile area, that the city could have the right to review it. And approve it, and if it was in the two mile, we didn't change that, because that's outside the uh, outside of area one. And then at the end, the uh other was the uh. Conflict committee that it didn't say conditional use permit. So I put any other application in there to do that. So I think these are. Just would make the agreement more concise versus what, you know, what it is now. So that's, that's what I had come up with. It's not a very large. I don't think it really changes. I think it's still some of the same understanding. It's just more clear on what a subdivision means, because we, that's where our big disagreement came from.
Well, a little bit of background on that as well. A couple of weeks ago, I spoke about Rod Sol- Sullivan on this, and we just kinda explained where. Uh, the county's stance on it, uh, as well as our stance on it, whereas the county stance was definition, we disagreed and by their ordinance. Or their their policies, that that's where it stood. Rod asked that we put together an amendment on this, because this was something. That neither side saw it was just an oversight. It's had had a situation like this happen before the Fringe Area. Agreement was negotiated, and this definitely would have been included in there. So what Kevin's done, uh, and has worked to prepare is essentially, it's just. Uh, following through with uh the request by Rod Sullivan and the supervisors as far as that we sent an amendment their way.
And I assume it's still need to be voted on by the county board.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And this is just gets it, gets us to send it to him, and then if there's changes, we'll have to come back.
I'm to approve resolution twenty-five twenty-seven Fringe Area Agreement Amendment.
That's okay.
Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
That takes us to resolution twenty-five twenty-eight, street closure uh for the Big Row event. Discussed earlier. Any additional comment on that? Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel? Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
So it's to item twenty, the resolution twenty-five twenty-nine, street closure for the Solon Weekdays. Any additional?
This is pretty typical. Um, dates just change from year to year. Um, no additional spaces or um. Some uh streets being closed, um, just closing for the annual weekdays event, which is um July. It's eighteenth and nineteenth. Check on that.
Questions, concerns, comments?
I'll move to agree resolution twenty-five twenty-nine.
Second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to item twenty-one, the Iowa DOT statewide sign project notification.
Yeah, we received this notification from the DOT. They're doing a statewide um. Sign project, and they have sent notification to um several cities in the area and asked. For the sake of public information, that the item we placed on is the council agenda. Um, and so there, I did share um our contact information and then asked to be invited to all pre-construction. Meeting and planning information meetings, so that we can stay in the loop of their timeline and uh just learn more about the project as they hold those meetings. So no actions, it's really just more information.
Last here, item twenty-two, contract addendum, uh, council discussion, possible action on city administrator contract addendum. I guess I'll speak on this a little bit. I don't know, Kevin, if you wanna jump in. So as we've gone through the restructure with. Uh, Public Works, uh, the Personnel Committee, and I discussed uh ways to uh reflect a to. Tie to responsibilities with that. And so at previous meetings, we restructured and had the pay resolution for our Public Works employees. Uh, we can be taking on the role as the interim Public Works Director while we look to uh fill that uh full time. This uh is set up as a bonus structure, knowing or hoping that, you know, in the in the near future, that the responsibilities that have been added to her plate. Come back off. So we've looked at a bonus structure rather than a salary increase uh with this, knowing that. Uh, everybody has taken on a lot more responsibility as we've gone through uh this restructure, but. I don't know, Lauren, if there's anything that you wanna add?
I mean, the the, I would say the Personnel Committee, this was an easy decision. Um, the work is. Could significant, especially at this time. We've got the water treatment plant coming. We've got a lot on our plate, and the role of Public Works Director is. Huge, so it makes complete sense to fairly compensate Kami for the extra work she's taking on at this time.
And from a financial standpoint, this does fit in with what we had. Uh, budget as well with the the reorg that we've done and the other spa- spot uh resolution or. Uh, pay resolutions that we've had, all of this fits within that budget that we have on there as well. Kevin, I don't know.
No, I think this is, I think you explained it well. It's just the two different payments and then. It's only only these two payments, and we revisit this in May of next year. If we haven't changed the, we haven't, we're still in the same boat. We'll revisit that next year.
Oh, there's any other questions?
Just continuing things of the public service staff and Kami for all the great work that you're doing under usual circumstances.
You, it's been a team effort, for sure.
Yeah. Uh, with that, do we have uh a motion for any action on the contracted then?
I'm going to do a private contract.
Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to other business of council committees, uh, streets. So state uh state golf uh tournament was hosted in town. So there was discussion around uh just some parking. I did not hear any concerns with that. It sounds like everything went pretty smooth and.
I heard about both days, parking, I didn't see any parking on the actual new part of this street, which is uh thankfully, I think the weather was dry. So there was the grass was able to accommodate it, but I really appreciated both the sheriff's office. And the Streets Committee for really coming together pretty quickly and helping to make some decisions and guide that, you know, so that we could accommodate a large crowd if it if we needed to.
That sounds like everything we've been went very well, and just another situation where we were able to showcase our community. Uh, Tommy and everybody settled back, great partners with that.
Back in the girls' union was really positive. It's just the best place that they've been uh to host a tournament organized. Parking obviously was all more concerned with our organization, we're having people on site to move traffic effectively and uh. So, yeah, it's a, it's a tip of the hat to Tommy and his his staff out there, because that's no easy undertaking.
Have uh no updates for utilities, finance or personnel, uh, building needs and growth. I've lost a discussion around just the downtown property, so I assume I've continued to move forward with that, and Lauren will be. Tied up uh with those conversations on it. No updates from uh Police Committee. The City and School uh Committee, we have the SRNA a twenty-eight E agreement meeting planning for um Monday, the ninth. I guess next Monday, I as well have a joint meeting with the school board on that. Uh, any updates that I failed the? All right, uh, takes us to item twenty-four, city clerk report, Susan. Uh, the item twenty-five, as you mentioned, your comments.
Um, I just wanted to recap, um, Liz's reminder of the garage sales this weekend. We also have um a major. Uh, baseball tournament event happening at the SRNA, so a lot of activity. Um, the uh David men- Dave Juggendre had mentioned. The two public information meetings for the sewer plant analysis. One of those was scheduled for this Saturday, but we bumped that back. To June twenty-ninth, because I'm sure people would rather the garage sale than listening to sewer plant updates. Um, so, um, but those have been updated on the on the um, on the website. So if people ask about when those are. Please direct them to the city website. That's all I got.
And council votes?
I just wanna say the city looks phenomenal, like right now. It's so beautiful. So thank you for your efforts, you guys.
Uh, for Mayor comments, but Kami and Liz touched on garage sales garbage is still Friday, as usual with that. Did we give LRS a heads up that garage sale, so they may want to earlier start it all?
Yeah.
All right, so if everybody can remember to get your bins out uh early, hopefully they can eat some of our garage sale pathing with that. With that, uh, do we have motion to adjourn?
We do.
Second. All bases, Jack?
All right.
Can you post?
Somebody got second.